Since we have everyone, all commissioners and we have a full host of guests. We'll get this being started. This is the Monroe Planning Commission meeting, the regular meeting for Monday, July 22nd, 2024. It's 7:00 PM and I'll call the meeting to order. Ask Hannah to take role.
Great. Commissioners present and establishing a forum, Commissioners Blair, Bull, Dawkins, Lockhart, Lowe, Nugent, and Petrino.
Thanks Hannah. And as we review, we got minutes from June 10th and I had a couple changes that I emailed to Hannah earlier regarding June 10th.
Right there.
So that will strike the excuse. And then we have a former commissioner and the staff president area. And then just that cleanup Hannah. If we had all the commissioners here, then that final vote for adjournments would be set up. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. And so we'll approve any other changes before we make the motion to approve the minutes of June 10th. Melanie?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended from June 10th, 2024.
One second.
Commissioners in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay. And moving on to our most recent previous meeting, July 8th. Any edits, comments? Melanie?
I'm going to approve the minutes from July 8th, 2024.
One second.
Commissioners in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, good. Got a full agenda, so let me get to public comments. Is it time for people to speak to the planning commission in person on issues related to City Monroe? When invited to speak, please approach the podium, state your name and association with the city. I don't see anyone actually in person, so. Well. So I put that out of order Hannah, let the minutes reflect it. I can't do things in the proper order. So we do have one new or old business item. Anita, you have the middle housing draft code that bringing back where there's some of your changes?
Yes. Good evening, planning commissioners. Yes, I'm bringing back the draft middle housing code. So what we'll do tonight is just go through the draft. I'll explain the changes and they're based on comments I received on June 10th, at the June 10th meeting. So to start off with, I just deleted all the references to House Bill 1110, just because, as discussed earlier, we are not required to do a middle housing code, but in response to the affordability crisis, housing affordability crisis in the state and our in Monroe and our region, we are going to go forward with doing a middle housing code. So that's the beginning of the code, I just struck that. And then under purpose, so there was a comment at our last meeting about is this, will this allow for middle housing in all residential zones? And the answer is yes. So I went ahead and just clarified that in the purpose section of the code. So just for example, currently in our R7 residential zoning district, duplexes are not permitted. But if you have a development, a middle housing development, and you go through the section of the code, it will be allowed. So all the types of middle housing would be allowed. And so just that was the clarification for our last meeting. So as I go further down, some of the other changes that I did were regarding parking. So now I just deleted that section of the code. And it basically refers you to the parking chapter of the UDR. And so for that section of the code, it requires two parking spaces, two off-street parking spaces for every unit. So that's what we're thinking of doing. So any references to off-street parking, which is under different sections of this middle housing code, I just struck that out of the code for now, referring back to the so it's chapter 22.44. So another thing that we discussed at our last meeting was requiring affordable housing units. So I added a new section to the middle housing code. And it's at the very end of the code. And so basically it is requiring 10%. Let me go down to that section. So in the R7 zoning district, it's going to require that 10% of units are affordable housing units with a minimum of one affordable housing unit per development. And so the reasoning for this is because a lot of the infill developments that, or the potential infill developments in the city, they are going to be relatively small. So if you do the 10%, say if it's under four units, then that's happy in it. So that doesn't make sense. So that's why I put in there that you need to have a minimum of one affordable housing unit. So for R15, it's a little higher, so the requirement would be you have to provide 20% of units as affordable housing units with the same requirement of a minimum of one affordable housing unit per development. And then under our affordable housing code, there's already density bonuses that are under that chapter for providing affordable housing units. So in this section, I'm referring back to that chapter, just for some consistency. And then also I did receive comments from Commissioner Dawkins today. And I just wanted to go over those comments as well, but we might have a couple of questions.
Just for ease of clarity, for anybody who watches this meeting, can you do a quick definition of what qualifies as affordable housing?
So if you reference back to the affordable housing code, there's different income requirements under there. So it'd be up to the developer for what you want to provide for that income level. But basically affordable housing is not more than 30% of your income.
Well, I don't know if it's applicable at this point. I know what I was reading in here. And I know we've discussed how they're much smaller.
Yes.
But I was reading in a point, I was trying to, I should have made it know where I was reading it. And I got kind of confused with it was popping up and being the same size in the development and other housing. That, did I read that incorrectly?
Oh.
I think.
Okay, that's okay. Maybe the scale of the developments? I'm not sure.
So if a developer coming in and building homes, let's just say for example, they have to have a 20% or whatever of middle housing, they would still be scaled down in size?
Yes, so it'd be correct. So whatever the development is, say it's a triplex or a duplex, like just one of those units would have to be affordable.
Okay. Actually, I thought that I was reading something and I.
Yeah, the idea is to have not, so when you're looking at this development, you're not like, oh, that's the affordable housing unit, you know? You want everything to look the same, so no one can tell. It's just like, oh, that's a new development, that's really nice infill. And you wouldn't be able to know that it's affordable.
And the 20% is just for R15?
Correct. So that's what I have now. We can change it. It's just, you know, those developments will probably be for density wise, be a higher, higher number of units. So that's the reasoning for 20%.
Bob has a question. Bob?
The code calls out incentives for developers, and my assumption is that the density bonuses is, is, are the incentives?
Yeah, that's one of the incentives, another incentive which I'll work into this code at another date, but we do want to do things like increase lot coverage, reduce that X, those types of things. So those are going to be some other incentives I'm going to put in the code at a later date.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
And Anita, I just wanted to mention, so we were talking about this a lot of work. So Seattle released a bunch of information on their ADU building permits.
Okay.
At what level do you think? Because Seattle's saying 70% of single family permits include one or more ADU on the property. This is, you know, maybe a little off topic, but how is that going to help us? Do you think that we're going to get to those kind of numbers for infill?
Um, for ADUs? Or just, yeah.
Um, I can speak to the ADUs. I can tell you, we've already have, we, our consultant, our comp plan, we've actually gone through and started figuring out how many, how many properties today could potentially have up to one or two for the new state law. Monroe historically has not taken advantage of accessory dwelling units. The city's allowed them since the early 2000s. But with the state changes, we are anticipating that that will be a piece of the affordable or attainable housing.
Yes.
And I will make a note to myself to figure out what that number is in the, in the comp plan, because that's part of us getting to the housing number for 2024.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so I also want to apologize. I know we talked a lot about trees and landscaping last time, and Commissioner Dawkins did write me some comments on that. So definitely we'll add that in the new section, because that's a really important component to this, to our new development. So thank you for that. So I'll make sure that I add that in the next version of the code. Commissioner Dawkins also had some questioning, questions on the cottage. If you want to speak to that a little bit more, it's what does that, a question on the images?
Oh, I think that it was just a cohesive
Okay.
image comment. I don't know if they used a different thing. And the images above look like they just used a different system.
Okay.
Visually, but also for the cottages, it said that the parking camp you're in, they need to be separated every five. I'm just curious as to why. Did that, the visual thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's more of just aesthetic.
It's going to get like, feels more homey and not like a.
Yes. Yeah, it's because typically with the cottage developments, everything, parking, common areas, they're clustered together and then away from the homes, so that it's kind of like a shared community. So but yeah, we can take a look at that. If there's some other type of design standard that you would like to see, I can.
And then on that, the cottages are like they have to be 900 square feet or under, or was it 1400 and under?
Yes, right now that's what it is. We want to take a look at changing that a little bit too.
I was just curious on those, like if they're one bedrooms, do they need two parking spots?
Uh, yes, it's two parking spots per unit. No matter, it's one, one bedroom, two bedrooms. And then also internally, we talked about, you know, we want to make sure that we address displacement. So I think one, one aspect of that is creating that affordable housing unit, but you know, we also want to make sure that our design standards are pretty strong. So that way, because there's been some comments on the, on the newer developments in town, so we just want to make sure that those are those are going to complement the inputs. So I'll be taking a look at those two then, if there's any comments for the planning commissioners, I'll accept those as well. So you can either have comments to me today or email me at any point. So if you see some other codes that you like, or or if you have any ideas of how to regulate those, those design standards. So I think we're getting closer. There are some things that I still need to work on. So, but yes, we're moving forward on this.
Thanks very much, Anita. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to new business. And we have 2044 comprehensive plan transportation element draft plan review with Scott Peterson. That is correct. We're in the moment, we get the technology out of the way. Let's see here. We'll share my screen. Somebody finds on my screen. Where's that magic? Yeah. We'll be close enough. All right, good evening commissioners. I'm Scott Peterson, the city engineer for Monroe. And so I wanted to bring forth to you our draft Monroe transportation plan. This was presented last week to the city council. So apologize in advance for quite a few of you who were there, you're going to see a repeat. Trying to summarize it, so we're not here all night. But anyway, as you know, the city's underway with our comp plan update. This is just one portion of it. This specifically is about transportation element, what we need to do to meet our future road forecast and land use proposals. So tonight I will talk about updates on how we measure or gauge our level of service in the city. Those new state laws that come around and change how we traditionally do that. We're going to talk about the modeling output and the proposed projects that are being developed. And then as well as just some financial strategies to fund the demand over the 20-year projection that this transportation plan covers. Definitely a better thing to do here is tied to our vision state intervention in Monroe. Of course, within that, the transportation element is means that by trying to build a structure that's centered or provided to all types of users, not just vehicles. So that's subjective. Our transportation plan also is very well connected with what we're doing here in Monroe, and we're under the the guidance or, should I say, the cooperation with other state local agencies, the Washington State's Growth Management Act. Judy Sand Regional Council, which is our region's planning group, their revision 2050. So much county with their own planning policies, and then within our own city, our land use element, these are all guidances, plans that we interact with, concur with, try and be consistent throughout the region. So we're all just kind of dovetail, we're all on the same page in terms of growth in the area. Some key updates to the transportation plan. House Bill 1181 recently passed that requires plans for infrastructure to not just traditionally focus on vehicle movements within the city, but now we're going to talk about other modes of travel. Call it active transportation, I hear, but that, that essentially refers to pedestrians, bicycles, scooters. Just, you know, other modes besides just the vehicles on the roads. So CLO requires agencies to look at multimodal levels of service. So you'll see an acronym in the LOS, that's what it stands for, multimodal level service. We look at the land use element that's being proposed and how we're, you know, the zoning changes, and then coming up with a growth based on that. And so that in turn generates a demand of the future, up to, you know, out to 2044, transportation demand forecasting based on our proposed planning. And then for that, we've built a draft list of projects and, you know, very rough cost estimates to cover that growth. And to ensure that our transportation system needs the growth that's being predicted. So what are the key updates? Well, again, as I mentioned, the planet rising year now goes in 2044. The multimodal level service we're coming up, and hopefully, you know, we have a lot of projects that we will be able to find ways to fund and build as much as we can with it, with the budget that we have. It was a nice little graphic over the side where it just shows, you know, we first look at the individual nodes, but then of our city street system, but then we start looking at traffic input, we look at pedestrian bicycle usage. It's not just staff, they also have transit routes, freight routes. That all feeds into the pot to develop our project list. And then of course, we try and find ways to fund that. So, and that is in a nutshell, how the transportation element functions. So our consultants, we hire transport group, their logo's in the bottom right corner of these slides. There are the consultants, subconsultants in the comp plan effort. They're tasked with looking at our existing infrastructure, coming up with the demand that's existing, then working with the planning element to determine the forecasting leader demand. And then coming up with the plan list to make our city street system be able to accommodate all that work. So of course, in the, when we talk about the streets themselves, we have a grid, if you will, that highlights the different road classifications. The city has five, is very common to have four, four to five classifications. And you think of it, arterials are, are like lifeblood of a community. They're meant to be a lot of cars in a quick enough fashion, so they tend to have a little bit higher speeds, more lanes, and not as many intersections or places to stop the traffic. Much like the freeway system, where it's hardly any, you know, just very limited on-ramps or intersections. That's the idea with arterials, and arterials are principal arterials on state routes in the city of Monroe, and then the arterials that are our streets are the orange ones on the graph there. And as we dial it down a little bit, we have two kinds of collectors. There's the collector, and there's a residential collector, which we decided to segregate out just to help identify which collectors are primarily collecting cars from residential areas versus collectors that are just moving cars from points from local streets to our arterials. And so you'll see in the blue, like you'll see that those are residential collectors, and then we have a couple purple ones that are collectors, but they're they're probably more associated with commercial or service centers. And then those that don't have color, but these are just a bunch of little white lines right here, those are local streets. So the only thing that's a little different from our previous classification is that we added the residential collector to further define or segregate out collectors. And that's kind of more important as we feed into the new multimodal aspect of the transportation, you know, the walkways, the bicycle routes. That's part of the strategy there. When it comes to the pedestrian route, kind of the same thing, the dark blue is primary pedestrian routes. Then the light blue is identified as secondary pedestrian routes. And you can also see there are some brown colors, whether we have existing off-street trails or paved trails, if you will, predominantly in the Ryland area. Of course, these are just primary secondary routes, and this doesn't mean that we're not having sidewalks anywhere else in the state. It's just these are designated primary or main pedestrian routes that we would identify. And then, you know, of course, the goal is to provide an interconnected web of streets where people or pedestrians can choose to and walkers in a car have a route that will provide connectivity throughout this city. Very similar to that is a bicycle network. Where again, we have the heavier purple lines as primary routes, and then the secondary routes being the lighter shade of purple. This is definitely both pedestrian route and bicycle route coordinated heavily with parks department, and you'll be hearing from them right after me. So some of these lines on the same grid will look similar. So when it comes to the level of service standard, there's, it's common to have level service defined as level A to P. A lot of people, well, I guess we all, a lot of people start thinking those are school grades and further down, you know, D is unacceptable. E is a weird grade, but F certainly is unacceptable. Well, I think that we would agree on this, F is unacceptable. A lot of roadways are considered at a level of service, D or E as meaning, actually level service, D is meaning their ultimate or peak capacity building of cars. So then it's up to agencies to identify, to adopt a certain level of service that they want their streets to be. So in our case, a level of service D has been adopted for our larger roadways, and the level of service C is for our collectors. And the graph, it just shows, you know, obviously, A, there's hardly any cars on the road, and because we have so many lanes, everyone can pick their lane to drive to town. And level service F would be the opposite way, where there's a lot of cars and a lot of lanes to move. So you can actually expect a lot of congestion or standing colors on the roadways. So we don't want F, but Cs and Ds are perfectly fine. Moving on, we then looked at the forecasting for Monroe. This is pretty much the population that existed at 21,000 and some change, and we're looking at the next 20 years to have Monroe grow to 26,000 some. So you see, the housing unit is going to grow by 2400-ish, and the jobs will also go up about that same amount. So what that's kind of forecasting is that our PM, so that's an afternoon commute hour, the PM peak hour trips are going to predict it to be up to about 30% increase over today, today's model. So what does that look like on a colorful map? On the left-hand side of this image is our current function of and level of service for our street grids on our collectors and arterials. Green is, dark green is A, and you see the color code legend in the bottom right. F is red. So in its current condition, everything is either A, B, or C. Let's fast forward 20 years to 2024. If no other capital projects were completed, this is what would happen. They still would say that everything's going to function C or better, except for that chunk of Highway 2, essentially from the 522 on-ramp all the way to Ryland. That would be a road that would hit unacceptable level service F. Oh, look at that.
They're saying that Lewis is A, frankly, is that possible?
Uh, Lewis is saying that, yeah. That's what it says.
When did they? That's just not possible.
Yeah.
Like that's probably an F. I mean, I know that this came up before when they were doing the average and like not doing prime time. Or like they're doing the average of the days, but that's like that's just not correct.
Now I will ask the transportation group as to why, because you know, the local population has experienced Lewis Street getting jammed up in the afternoon.
And I think that also that part of Highway 2 consistently is not going to travel daily.
Yeah, and also keep in mind, Monroe had this kind of unique experience where on Highway 2, it's a weekend, that tends to be a little more bogged down at the weekend. So commute trips are different. It's more about to work from work, PM peak. You know, the weekend isn't really something that is typical to the driver. When you think of more urban centers like Bellevue, you know, there's definitely congestion going in and going out during the weekday versus the weekend, it might be a little bit lighter on weekends. Monroe has the opposite. We have a lot of recreational through traffic or go around the mountains, if you will. But that still doesn't explain the Lewis, and I'll look into that question for you. But that still doesn't explain to Lewis, and I'll look into that question for him.
Scott, my question was, so you've, you've shown that rev in the forecast, but so it's been my observation with Frylands Boulevard. It feels like the traffic apps are redirecting folks from eastbound to through Frylands to get a shortcut to five-twenty-two. So I think that is probably going to make that worse as time goes on. I can't explain, I've lived in that area since ninety-seven. And it doesn't feel like it's folks coming from the industrial park. It, it doesn't feel like it's regular commuters. It's fairly constant. And it's just a huge, huge volume of traffic. And that's my only guess is the slowdown leading up to town for them to get on the, you know, five-twenty-two. I think it's telling them it's two minutes faster to go Frylands. And if they go forty-five instead of thirty-five, it's three minutes faster. So, just keep that in mind when you're forecasting Highway Two is stopped. They're, they're all going to come Frylands to get to five-twenty-two.
Certainly, and with the advent of these little apps that help you figure out how to get home quickest.
Yeah, if you could, like the hard to wait app, you know, going to go into Melk or whatever, it would be a way better.
We just need to hack the system and make them think all the time that Frylands is logged down and not free for them to go.
I know that consultants use data from Google Analytics, you know, it's all for sale. And so a lot of cars are, whether or not you know it, the car system, even your cell phones are
metadata.
metadata. And they're using that information to determine travel times, average travel times throughout the weekdays, you know, time of day. And that's kind of how they gather this information. Then, as you know, Waze or Google Maps are constantly kind of saying, hmm, now I saw, now go this way, right? You've seen them shift. Then change their mind just fifteen minutes later. So.
Yeah, I know the job is tricky to predict this kind of stuff, but sometimes unintended consequences, they did on a smaller, uh, arterial.
Oh, Liz, thanks.
Thank you. My other concern is Kelsey being a B and staying a B. I mean, that traffic has significantly gotten worse, so. But it could be similar to what Sherbowl was saying, because Frylands Boulevard is also those, those, yeah, I understand the analytics, but when you're actually driving these and Kelsey came back all the way up from Highway Two to Main Street when it's really bad, so it's hard to believe that's a B on Kelsey. So, that's my concern. And I know we've talked about these traffic maps repeatedly, but yeah, same concern with Lewis as well. Those are Frylands, Kelsey, and Lewis are pretty heavily traveled roads along with one-seventy-ninth, so.
I will ask the transport group to see what they have to say about that. Keep in mind that the P and P hours typically be around four, four to five. And I know that Kelsey sometimes gets brought down closer to the school release, if you will. There's a lot of extra cars when they're picking up their kids and trying to get off the main street, but it's, it's an average peak time, you know, not like, whatever, the day of Thanksgiving, you know, the worst ever, you know. It's, it's just the average P and P time that they're looking at. There's Commissioner Trino, oh, Bob.
Yeah, I have to agree, the traffic, traffic studies are always subject to unintended consequences. Traffic studies and noise studies, they, they both fall from victim to the same thing, and that is, it all depends on how the study, initial studies were done. If they were doing estimates, then, you know, all bets are off. If they were doing pay counts slash, you know, kind of tally type stuff, maybe it's a little bit more accurate. I always found it's, it, the best approach is to revisit the project after it's been in service for a while and actually see what the real world impact of traffic is. Particularly if you make changes to traffic flow. Or do any kind of traffic calming. So that, that's my experience.
And then also just a comment, because it's with Highway Two, the city, even though it's within city limits, the city has very little control over the stuff on there, right? Because it's in the jurisdiction of the state, so if, if something happens and Two's even worse, then there's not a whole lot that Monroe as a city can do to make that better, make adjustments to it, but it can directly and negatively impact our local streets, which we do have control over, but if the, if the source of it is Highway Two or Highway five-two-two, or even two-o-three is a lot of it is going to be state jurisdiction, then there's little that the city can kind of do to match some of that, right?
Um, that's right. We, the state routes are under the ownership of Wash Dot. But Wash Dot has plans, if you will, to do some sort of improvements or maybe congestion's getting bad. Showing this and identifying it on our comp plan gives us some leverage or negotiating power with them. Versus them just autonomously coming through and not really caring what's going on in Monroe. It does give us a seat at the table to discuss within their plans.
So to follow up with that, then, the chunk of five-two-two that is on our map does not indicate how horrid and awful the commute into Monroe is on five-two-two on the regular. And that is not just during commute hours, that is almost any time of the day, as somebody who goes through there on afternoons throughout the week sometimes. And so how, how does that kind of factor in to with with some of the things that are going to impact Monroe and the Monroe, and Monroe drivers that are, you know, coming in and out of the city. But, you know, the road is obviously out, one, it's state, then also it's going into neighboring cities and stuff. But it's still very, very directly impacts Monroe. How does that all kind of come together to to connect to then be, you know, bargaining power with the state? Because, you know, we've had the hashtag finish five-two-two for ever. And, yeah, it's on the, it's on the, it's in the budget, it's listed in the state budget, but it's also several years out. And they're going to do adjustments prior to it. So you just never know, it may get pushed out some more, or it may get moved up with, you know, future sessions, you don't know. But I feel like there's, there's some of that with Two as well, because there's land that's kind of been earmarked as a potential for the overpass that there isn't a commitment to yet. And so if they were to put that in the budget, obviously that's going to change up to a little bit, which will impact the rest of our roads as well. Hopefully, you know, for the better, if we had something like an overpass, but with all those things, how does it, how does it kind of play in if we're, if it's multiple cities, you know, obviously like Sultan Gold Bar are going to be directly impacted by stuff with Two as well. So does the state kind of look at them all together in terms of like bargaining power for some of that?
Well, yeah, I mean.
It's a big question, that really is, alright.
No, that's right. But, I mean, we work with our agencies throughout our county and we identify priority projects at the county and the agency, they're all with the unified voice going down to Olympia and talking to our legislature and saying, this is their number one priority. Finish five-twenty-two, you know, that's been the drumbeat for us for a while, continues to be our top priority is to finish five-twenty-two. And so we have our own hired lobbyists that go down there, they send representatives like council members, the mayor. They go down there and that's just us. The county's doing it, the homeless is doing it. All these cities are going down there and working with legislatures to say, hey, your constituents say this is your most, this is where you need to send your money. You know, I know there's lots of jobs or projects out there that are needed, but we really need you to send some money our way, because this is a real thorn. And all these voices are saying, so it's not, not just one person out here, you know, so we're all coordinating that, coordinating that message to our legislature to try and get money sent our way. Some money does show up. I know that there's been a ten or twelve, maybe eighteen million dollars have been assigned to five-twenty-two, but it's far short of actually building it. But it probably pays for the design part of it. Uh, but there's a long ways to go before we have complete funding. And you're right, the state's on the budget cycle, you know, they don't talk about this every day of the year. They have their sessions and then they go away for the rest of the year. You know, so, and then they're, they're setting projects that are not next year, but a few years down the road. So how is it all, it's complicated, right?
Yeah, and priorities change. So we look at this with the, with Two. If before the funding is finalized and everything's done with five-two-two, this is just an example, completely hypothetical. But then all of a sudden, now we've got a piece of Two, and we're probably not the only piece along Two, there's going to be multiple stretches here that are now failing grade. Well, who's to say the state isn't going to say, okay, well now Two's the priority. So we're going to give money to Two and, you know, five-two-two's still in the back corner, or something similar with any combination of roads that they control.
So I mean, and that's just, you know, ultimately that's the state's transportation plan where they decided that this is where the money should go. I know that there's been more money tamed up at the Tresol going into Everett. Well, since you go down five-twenty-two, you know, when you get to the four-five, they're doing something pretty spectacular there, right?
Yes.
So, you know, this is where they're targeting their money. When is, when is more going to be directed towards the resident bike lanes, right? You know, we just do what we can to let our voices be heard. Move on. Bob, do you still have your hand up?
What was that?
We just wonder if you still have your hand up. We'll move on.
No, pull it down.
Pedestrian level service. So we talked about vehicles and we're talking about.
I'm sorry, I have a quick question on the last, I'm sorry. So, when you're showing existing and then your forecast, even though you have projects that are going to outside of the state highway, you know, within Monroe, you have projects, so it's always going to consistently be changing that forecast, right? And as you do different projects, it's going to be changing.
It would, and hopefully, but there, hopefully they'll build some of this, make some worse. So, correct. This, this scenario was a, a do-nothing scenario.
Right.
But we definitely have a project list anyway. And we'll get to that in just a few minutes. Pedestrian level of service, again, this is something new that traditionally you wouldn't look at, but with the state House bill that was recently passed requires jurisdictions to look at all ways of travel. The difference is with the, with vehicular travel is based about how much time it takes. Very similar to your Waze program or your Google, where it's, so it'll take you fifteen minutes to drive this route. That's similar to the vehicular analysis. It's like, what's your time delay on these corridors in Monroe? That's how you get that level of service grading. For Monroe, and pedestrian and also in bicycles later, it's less about how fast can someone walk. It's more about can you get from point A to point B on a sidewalk without end up walking down the side of the road or something like that. So it's more about connectivity and providing that complete network. With that in mind, the, on the map there, you'll see that green roads on our, our primary and secondary routes, what that's saying is that those, those facilities already exist and no further projects would be needed. If it's orange, it refers that some exist, but not all of the facilities exist in that area. That would meet our standard, our proposed standard. So in the case, maybe our standard requires sidewalks on both sides of the street, but in the orange area, maybe there's only sidewalk currently on one side of the street. So we need to build the other side sidewalk in order to turn that orange to green. And then red is simply there's no sidewalk that, no, no pedestrian facility spread. The, one thing to note that with the all active transportation being considered, some of these failing streets are, can be subject to impact fees, you know, collecting from development, developments would have to provide fees to help build sidewalks. Traditionally, that would be a very small percentage of the amount we collect. So. Moved forward. Someone had a hand. Oh.
Thank you, I apologize. Are the red areas potentially a higher priority? Obviously, green is good, but the red sections, and I guess my thought is that Blueberry Lane and the one-seventy, so one-seventy-nine, one-eighty-second, I flipped those. The one straight up from the middle school, I mean, those seem to be pretty important routes, so I'm just curious if.
Yeah, the color code isn't a priority code. It's about what kind of facilities exist currently. If, if it's purely absent of any facility, then it gets a red. But it's not intending to identify which ones are priorities. However, we do have a project priority that's coming up, so stay tuned.
Thank you.
On the bicycle grid, if you will, again, it's about just getting from point A to point B on our primary and secondary routes. A little more fragmented, as you can imagine. There are some streets that have bicycle facilities on it, and then there's some that just have none. So, you know, this is pretty much another graphic of, of the analysis. It also like to point out that, of course, it's coordinated with the parks, trails plan, so you'll see a lot of that later. And then the only changes that will probably be occurring at this point with the map is that we'll show some sort of outlying arrows kind of suggesting that there's also planned connectivity to Duval or to just the homeless through a regional trail system, you know. So that is something that the council had requested get drawn on the map, just to show potential connectivity to other cities near us. So, the project map is a it's pretty involved, but this is pretty much projects that we're identified in the draft list. A lot of the projects that you see on the legend to the bottom right, you'll see green being a sidewalk project. Also, it starts with S W, so that will also help you identify whatever we're talking about, but the green are sidewalk projects. Blue would be bike lanes. I think that's red over there, it's better to say. Multi-use paths, we talked about some of those. And then if it's kind of circular or Pentagon, those are intersection improvements on the city, in the city grid system. So that's how our consultants came up with, I think, about forty or so projects that we're on for the next couple decades. I think in your packet, you have a list of projects. I didn't print out, I didn't want to set up on the screen the whole, whole, there's a lot of pages to your packet, so if you want to see a a, a list of those projects, you can see that in your packet. But in a summary, you'll see that a lot of these projects have to do with things that aren't directly on the street, if you will. If you look at multi-use paths, you look at just sidewalk construction, right there, we have twenty-eight of forty-one projects. So what does that all mean? Well, our consultants believe it means ninety-nine million dollars. It's a lot of money. And how do we get to that money? Well, we do have revenue streams. But you can see that there's a deficit of close to forty-three million dollars in capital need to realize all these projects they've identified. On top of that, just the maintenance and operations of our facilities is projected to be about a million dollars shy. So all in all, we're talking about a forty-four million dollar deficit that the city needs to come up with a plan. On the left-hand side, these are options, ideas, of course, seeking other people's money, as I like to call it, state federal grants to help us build the projects. Um, it's actually is a very critical component of transportation is to get grants. We can also, you know, there's always tax increments, we can go out for bonds if if we want to essentially get a loan. We can establish local improvement districts if we want to focus on something that's just in a particular area. Or, you know, more of the worst-case scenario, maybe some of these projects are pushed out. You just simply don't have, so we have to make some choices. You just simply don't have, so we have to make some choices, so which ones we push down the road. I guess it didn't have a list, but.
So. You make a project list, and this is like over a twenty-year period.
Right.
But when you show like the last thing you were showing, can the, the money part of it and the deficit, that's in twenty twenty-four dollars. So that's obviously as years go on.
Certainly.
That's going to come, what would it be different?
Forty-three might be a hundred and ninety-eight later, right?
Right. So I, I just find it, it's, it's, and I know we're not, you know, we're not a transportation in other areas too, and I know that's probably what they're looking for. Maybe the estimates of what you need, and you give you dollar figures, but we're not projecting any of that cost increases. So I feel like it's, it's kind of going to be so outdated in not too long.
Well, the, the reason why we look at just today's dollars is because we can relate to today's dollars. You know, twenty years from now, when the list is two hundred million dollars inflated, well, maybe people are all on average making three hundred thousand dollars a year too. You know, so it's kind of, kind of relative in terms of, you know, the cost of it, but today we feel that we know how much a gallon of gas costs. You know, we could feel the pinch, and so when we see in today's dollars, ninety-nine million dollars needed, that's a lot of money, you know, and uh, we have, you know, as we mentioned, revenue streams include uh developer fees, they pay oh geez, thirty-four hundred dollars a single family resident, somewhere around there for traffic impact fees. Yeah, like coming around anecdotes, uh, you know, so we're quoting thirty-four hundred dollars per new home that goes up, and on top of that, the engineering group is writing multiple grants every year to, to get um funding, and usually when that happens, we probably at least eighty-five, about eighty, eighty-five percent of the projects will get paid for by the grant, which is a huge savings, you know, who wants eighty-five percent off, mine do, you know, but um, so as it, as mentioned a little earlier, it's critical for us to get partnership funding to get some of these transportation projects knocked out. You know, we can handle some of the smaller sidewalk ones with the money we have, but these bigger heavy hitters, especially intersection improvements, you definitely need other people to do it.
I'm going to add to that too, I mean, um, the transportation plan, they do a, a six-year transportation improvement plan that gets for a six-year period that gets adopted every year, and the comp plan is not, it's not static for twenty years, we update every ten. So these numbers will change, it's, it's constant now, but as things are changing, it's not, you're, we're not waiting a full twenty years to figure out, oh my gosh, now we're so far behind because we're in twenty really poor dollars.
Yeah, there's a good chance it would be a left heel. So every, every year by state law, we're required to go through and update our six-year project range. And um, that goes through a whole process here, so we're constantly looking every year at where, where can our money go, what's on the radar, what are we queuing up to work on, and showing that we have financing behind it.
I know we went through periods where, you know, cement is scarce and, you know, this is scarce, the price is elevated, so it's so hard to tell.
Can we have more questions? Let me get to Liz first.
Thank you, I had a question. As buildable land is built out, is this updated? Cause like a multi-use plan is shown as going from Kelsey to one seventy-ninth down Columbia Street, but that is no longer viable because there was a subdivision added at the end of where Columbia Street dead ends now. So. Does that stuff get reviewed and updated? That multi-use dash O two. That's no longer a possibility of being a through street unless you go through the easement.
Not to get into specifics, but for that particular one, that was more using the P U D easement that's there.
Wow, okay. That was, that was kind of my question, because I know there was some confusion, because um, like people really wanted it to go through, but yeah, so I was just curious if things get updated as we build out our usable land and all that, so thank you.
Okay, sorry for the delay, I'm using a new device, um. So I had a question on some of the statistics, um, it's showing on page two seventy-nine of three thirty-two. Or also it might be labeled as page seventeen on your stuff. To me, it's showing that um, there were eight fatalities this year with pedestrians. Is that, is that, am I reading that right?
Well, I just have a table in front of you, but I'm trying to find.
I think so two seven. I have it as two seventy-nine.
I, well, I'm on page seventeen of the draft transportation plan document. It does have a table.
Okay, sorry, it's one, it's one up from that, it's um, it's page sixteen.
Oh, luckily that's on the other side of this page.
Sorry, um, so it's like, um, it has two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, and then it shows for, oh sorry, two thousand and twenty-two is the last uh year that they show, and it has um eight.
Well, it's fatal or serious, so it can be one fatal and seven serious.
Okay.
Yeah. So many so, so I think it's more a serious injury versus fatality.
Okay, and that goes in line with um, with our whole state, because our whole state um fatality and serious injuries are up, and I know the governor's just made a focus for for that for this year to try to work on driver um etiquette behavior and speed especially, and I'm guessing um, that those were probably factors in some of these accidents. So hopefully with the statewide um emphasis on that, we will also be able to use that and emphasize uh, in our own town of Monroe, those behaviors to stop. Um, another question is, so when we're looking at the right below that on the next graph where it shows um where there was the high likelihood of the accidents and stuff. Um, I know there's like the P three committee for the city council, but um, is there any other avenue to like focus on this and try to maybe prioritize some of these projects uh, so that it coincides with these areas that have been experiencing the high volumes of, of accidents? And would that be like, like through community feed back somehow um, to try to prioritize these so we can see some real results in, in areas that we know that it's needed before we have more accidents in these areas?
Well, the answer is we could, certainly, um, as I mentioned earlier, uh, a lot of it has to do with funding. So on some more serious locations that need some major investment, we would need to convince other funding partners to provide money. Unfortunately, um, accidents do help with funding, because they too like to prioritize their dollars towards uh places with with the most uh impact, and then in this case, if reducing the number of serious injuries or fatalities, so if we have a, a particular location that's had a lot of accidents, uh, then yeah, it could score well, hate to say that, but it can score well towards uh getting federal and state grants to help us improve that location.
So one follow-up question, um, it had said that there, there's a high rate of um, those accidents on Lewis and Main, and then it said that there was a potential um, like safety improvement planned for that in a subsequent section. Um, I see something on like the capital facilities plan. That just says safety improvements, um, is that, is that, I miss it somewhere in here where there was a more detailed plan for safety improvement.
Well, I, I know that in our capital facility plan, we do have safety improvements, and that's the, I'll call it a catch-all, but a generalized but it's a very line item to improve. It's, it's probably more geared towards pedestrian use, you know, as as we, you've heard in paths that we have things like rectangular flashing beacons that are being proposed at locations in Monroe, that would be what that pot of money is being used for is to improve uh pedestrian movements through town, you know, safety improvements. Something about uh converting a signal to a roundabout, that's not what that pot of money would be for. Um, that would be a specific project listed out because it's such a high dollar amount, but what we want to do in the capital facility identify a budget for making safety improvements without knowing specifically where we're talking about at that point, we just want to have an opportunity, should exist, that it's been budgeted for. And we don't have to take two steps back before we can go forward. So we just wanted the, the city to recognize that we need to set, or we would like to set some money aside for making that, those uh quick, if you will, have more lower cost safety improvements uh wherever they may crop up.
Uh, just a further comment.
Yeah, that makes sense, um.
We're not.
You're breaking up.
I had just one last thing, what is the what's the path for, I know for planning, you know, the reason that I care so much about the, some of the questions that I'm asking, except that it falls in line with the goals that we're trying to meet for um, the comp plan and getting the, you know, multimodal transportation and enticing developers to, you know, have areas where people walk and things like that, and so the safety of the roads is important. And my last question is, how does a person uh, get input on how, on where these priorities should be? Sorry if you guys aren't able to hear me, I'll um
Lot of trouble.
I can follow up with my last. Yeah, it's fine, I'll just ask my last question later.
I guess my general comment about how can your voice be heard, how can your influence be towards prioritizing, um uh, of course, there's always venue at council, you know, to bring up your concerns in the city, um, that exists all the time. Um, that'd be probably your best shot, but then, you know, sometimes there will be discussion items uh, related transportation and a council agenda, you know, any particular council meeting, and those are all opportunities for you to provide written comment if you want, or do some speaking, uh, if you want. But that would be my general recommendation is just provide your voice at the council.
Um, just to comment and expand on that, from the, on page eighteen, with the collision summary, um, not that it like minimizes the safety issue, but it looks like the two fatal, because it says there were two fatalities over that five-year period, and both of those fatalities were on state, so one was on highway two um, up close to the uh, Pride Lands, it's more close to the fairgrounds, but um, and then the other one was on five twenty-two. Um, kind of uh past the high school basically, but on five twenty-two, so in terms of the, where the fatalities happened, um, we're probably limited as a municipality on what we can do for those particular areas, but obviously we see a good, we have a good look at where things are happening more frequently um, within like our downtown core and um, in areas where we can uh, have control over some of the, the safety improvements moving forward.
I just, you know, every grant has a certain program, its goals and objectives, so uh, pedestrian sidewalk grants, they want to know more particularly about if there's, if there's an accident history, was it specifically involving a pedestrian or a bicyclist? Not, not a rear ender from one car to another, you know, so certain grants look for certain things. So, that being said, you know, so when we have like a a pedestrian car contact, you know, and we're trying to get safe improvements or crossing improvement, or more better sidewalk than the occasion that may not have some, you know, those are those are things we look at, provide data to the ranking viewers, so help score above the other cities. I'll see. I think we were well into this slide called questions, uh, any other?
Kind of off topic of this, but um, as far as in city limits, like crosswalks and just um, street the, the lining, the strike, you know. I, I've noticed several areas that really faded, so that's something that the city just kind of does on rotating bases of where they're repainting and.
Yes, from our, our pavement marking program, we do that in the summer with our overlay program, because paint doesn't stick on wet surface, and you know, we're in Washington after all. So summer is when we're going through and hitting uh, restriping the roads. We don't do all the roads every year, because that'd be costly, number one, but so we, we do have a program, some roads we do hit every year because it's just frankly a lot of traffic.
Yeah.
But other ones are on a rotation, maybe every other year or every third year. Some roads don't get a strike, but we're only talking like really quiet neighborhoods, you know, um. But our collectors and our materials are definitely have stripes, uh, and so every beginning of every year, in conjunction with our overlay program, we also identify the roadways that we want to be restrike that some, and we queue it up and put it in our bid package for the contractor.
Thank you.
The only other thing is, uh, if you have any questions or comments or some other form, um, if you could have that to us by the end of the month, that would be great, and we'll provide that or include it in our front process, if you will. Thank you very much. I'm trying to get technological again.
Item six point two, master trails plan update with Ben Swanson.
Thank you. So I'm Ben Swanson with the Parks Department, and we also have the consultants, the Dr. McLean, Connie right next to me, and then uh, David's on the screen there, so let's give a quick introduction, so what happened after we did our twenty twenty-two park recreation and open space plan update is we discovered the big feedback we got from the residents is they wanted more detail on trails, and they wanted to, us to plan for future trail segments. So we quickly started gearing up to develop a trails plan. Monroe never had one before, we have little kind of uh excerpts in the uh, in the pros plan. Gave overviews, kind of some general future uh trail plans, but nothing that really focused on it. And so we started planning for that, and then it just happened that the states um, uh, under G M A started requiring a multimodal planning for uh, transportation. And so it was a great opportunity for us to partner with Public Works and the Transportation Plan, so we kind of slowed down and let the transportation plan kind of catch up, and then we met up together and then just kind of followed through the process. And so that saved us money because we didn't have to duplicate data, um, only one group had to, had to generate the data, and then we're able to share the findings. And so you'll see as you go through the transportation plan and then this plan, they, they should mesh very, very nicely together. Uh, because all the data and, and Connie and David worked with Transpo, uh, uh, Patrick and Yeah. Quite a bit throughout the process, so um, so overall, really good document. Um, and then one last thing, kind of like what Scott said, as far as uh, questions, you're going to get a lot of information tonight, there's, it's a big packet. If you could have uh, any comments back to me by August second, that would be great, because I'm taking it to uh the park board for review on the August fifteenth. And that'll give me time to get everything and everybody's comments in the packet, and give it to the park board for a review. So um, with that, I will turn it over to Connie.
Yes, I'll get it started, um, my name is Connie Record with the Pod Record. Uh, thank you very much for taking a look at this document, if you have, uh, I'll let David introduce himself and admit, um, I'm the principal in charge on this project. David uh, had a, a pre-scheduled event that took him out of state, so otherwise he would, he would as well. Um, he is really responsible for the vast majority of this planning effort, uh, and is the primary author. Um, so he's the one who'll be giving uh, you Um, so he's one who will be giving uh you kind of a high level overview of the planned content. But we'll both address any questions that you have and then at the end, um, we do have a few slides. At the end, if those help support, you know, response to some questions, so. Um, with that, uh, David, I do believe that they are going to advance slides here. So you can just let them know and we'll get started.
Good. Can you can you all hear me? Okay. Yes, good. Uh, so yeah, I'm David Saxon. I'm the project manager with my cloud record. And. Uh, so next slide. So what I'll do is I will um run you through, like Connie said, sort of a high level. A high level overview of the plan. I mean, it's pretty detailed, so we, you know, obviously can't go into everything. Uh, so to start with, um, you know, this came up during. The transportation element um presentation and then Ben also, you know, gave you more detail on how we coordinated with the comp plan transportation element. So so there is, there's quite a bit of consistency. I mean, we have to be consistent with with that plan. You know, between the um transportation plan and the trails master plan. Uh, then the the uh mainly the networks that we're showing are consistent. So this is their. Um, their network on the right. And you'll see as we as we go forward that our, you know, our our trails network is very consistent with what what they're showing in both their pedestrian and their bicycle. Um, networks. The main difference is that uh the trails master plan shows it's some additional projects. Um, that are outside of the public right that uh pu- uh public right away that are really um beyond what the transportation plan is showing. Uh, the trails plan um ha- has much more detail on facility types. Um, and and the feasibility of those those um facility types, we really drill down. And look at the right away and figure out, you know, if we if we want a route here, which makes sense, you know, how are we going to accomplish that? It's not definitive, but we have a pretty high level of confidence that the facility types that we're recommending in the plan are viable. Um, and again, it'll take more study to really confirm that. Uh, and then um. So at the end of um, you know, one of the main products of our of our plan is is a um is a. Is a project list of all the projects that we're recommending. And what we've done also, so many of those overlap or are consistent with the same projects as the as the transportation plan. Those projects, their primary and secondary multimodal multimodal routes. Get their own sort of tier, sort of higher priority tier because they're basically mandated, you know, by GMA in the complaint process for, you know. For the transportation element. Next slide. So this is our schedule. Uh, this was our schedule. We started in the summer of twenty twenty-three. You know, we did an inventory. We engaged the community. I'll talk a little bit more about that in detail in just a bit. Um, we went to the community. Asked, you know, questions, what do you want? How do you use the trails currently? What types of things? You know, would you like to do? Where where should trails be that we're missing? Developed a draft plan, went back to the community to get a reality check. Is this, you know, this is what we heard. This is the the. The draft trail network. What do you think? Give us comments. Um, and then from there, we took that draft plan and and I'm kind of developed it further. We developed implementation strategies. And where we are now is is obviously, um, you know, we've done, we've created a draft of the plan, getting comments from. Uh, city council and planning commission and then we'll finalize and adopt the plan um later this fall. Next slide. So um just the organization of the plan, pretty straightforward. I I'll just point out then, you know, the the meat of the plan is really the trail network, chapter three. And then the project list, those are kind of the key things, you know, that will guide the development of trails over the next twenty years. Um, chapter five has um, you know, different topics on implementation. And then the appendices has sort of more dense, some of the background data that we um that you were used to generate the plan. Next slide. The goals and objectives for the trails plan were basically derived from the pros plan. A lot of work went into that process. And um and the goals align really closely, not not every goal from the pros plan, but most of the goals, like safety and connectivity and equity. Um, those are all, you know, really well thought out and spelled out in the in the pros plan. So we, you know, we basically without, you know, without reinventing the wheel again through our process, we use those goals and kind of develop them. And refine them so that they're specific to a trails plan, you know, and and active transportation. Next slide. So again, the community engagement process, we had two open houses, one in September of twenty twenty-three and then one and the second one in March. We had two online surveys for people that could not attend the open houses that were basically asked the same questions. We used the same tool that the pros plan used where you can. Um, you can, you know, you can look at the network, you can place location specific comments, you can draw trails. Um, so we got really good feedback from both the the in-person and the online. Open houses and surveys, I think we had over two hundred people. I know some of you were there. I think Commissioner Blair was there and maybe some some others of you. Um, and it was just really great. I mean, everybody loves trails, so it makes our job, you know, really fun and easy. Uh, just a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of support, a lot of excitement for um what what people were seeing. We also had stakeholder interviews that reached out to very specific. People in the community to get, you know, to have one-on-one. Um, feedback. Next slide. So this is a um really important part of what we're trying to do. And this has to do with kind of how um how many people you can um get, you know, really get to. Use non-motorized transportation, to use bicycles specifically. In the com- uh in typical populations, about sixty percent of the people are are um. Are potential bicyclists, that people who we call interested but concerned, and there are people that would gladly bike if they felt safe and comfortable doing so. Um, so this is mainly in in the facility that you provide and the network. Um, so the main, the main thing these people will say that are sort of interested but concerned is that they're afraid of car traffic. That's the number one reason that that people won't bike who might bike. Uh, and the key to um making them comfortable biking is to provide separation from car traffic, especially on busy streets. The way we do this is is um the simple way is to add um a buffer to bike lanes, like a two-foot buffer with flex posts. Those are shown on the left of this this image. Um, and then there, you know, there there are like twenty-five other variations of this plant. You could do concrete planters or just wheel stops along that that buffer that help. Make people feel comfortable and safe biking. You can also use uh what's called a shared roadway or a bicycle boulevard. Um, or a greenway, they're called in Seattle. And and these are networks of of more typically residential streets. That have um slow car traffic and low volumes of car traffic. So in those situations, people biking can share the roadway with vehicles. Uh, and another key point is to have safe crossings where these these um trails with a network cross. Um, streets or um cross at intersections. And then it's really important, it's really key to have a continuous network. If there are gaps in the network between destinations along the network. It really um um is prohibitive for people biking. Next slide. So in the plan, we um we have prototypes. So this is just an example of some of the prototypes that that are in the plan. It's a protected bike lane. Again, you see the, you know, the buffer with the flex posts. Separating the the cyclists from traffic. And then in cases, I should just point out, so. In some cases, we have um what are called shared use trails or shared use facilities where the people biking and people walking share the same pathway. And typically those are separated from roadways. Um, in cases where the right away is confined and limited. Um, the 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 bike facility is separate. Um, typically within the roadway like this, like like the like the example shown, and then the sidewalk serves as the pedestrian route along that. Um, along that route in the network. Next slide. So to um, so as part of the process, we developed a study network where we really kind of, again, we drilled into the detail. We looked at what facility types were possible. Um, and what facility type was needed to ensure safety. If it was a higher volume street, we knew we had to have more separation. If it was a low volume street, you know, we knew we could do a a bike way. Uh, or a shared shared roadway. In many cases, there are trade-offs, which some of which can be um pretty politically, you know, volatile. Um, one of those is, you know, if um can can we remove parking from a street and accommodate it somewhere else nearby? To 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 a um to, you know, incorporate a bike lane. Um, can the street be rechanalized or can the lanes be narrowed to provide that extra two-foot buffer on either side? So those are some of the trade-offs that um that aren't easy, but um are necessary to um to to make this whole thing work in an existing. Constrained environment. Next slide. So the so the main product, as I said before, will be a final trail network like the one shown on the right. This will just simply show existing um routes and proposed routes. The existing routes are solid black lines and the proposed routes are dashed. The plan will also identify trail standards. Um, and then one of the main things that will define projects that are consistent with the um. The transportation plan, it will prioritize those projects and then um. Um, provide ideas for implementation, including funding sources. And um. And and guidance on other policies like micro mobility, you know, how how does the city deal with that and bike parking? Next slide. So um for each project, there's a project sheet and this is just one example of a project sheet. So uh we take the, you know, the each project and provide a description. Give the length, um list the connections that it would create. Um, we've done a planning level cost estimate for all of each of these projects. And then um. You know, provide additional notes like like those shown here. Um, additional study required. Um, talk about some of the trade-offs that are that are necessary to to um complete the projects. Next slide. That's it. So again, there's, I mean, there's a lot of detail on the plan and um if you haven't, you know, looked through it. Please do and um. At least if I if anything's confusing, it'll be more clear when you look at, you know, restart reading through the plan.
All right, this is a um tiny typo just for um before I forget about it, because I may forget before I get home. Um, on the acknowledgements page, um, it should be Tammy Beaumont. That's just something that my brain will forget when I get home, so I wanted to say it now.
Thank you.
Just wanted to say that I really liked how this was laid out. It was easy to read. I liked the pictures and the color in it. Um, it was a lot of information. It is very detailed, but it kind of broke it up where it was much easier to read. I really. Liked that. And um the other thing is the the wayfinding system. I thought that was, I I like that a lot too. Um, I think especially when you have people out on trails, whatever, I think it's a great way. Or even if you're not, you know, even if you're not out somewhere, but you're, you know which way to go. It's very easy when you're walking and you're doing things, you kind of wait, which point am I at now? So I I like that system.
Well, thank, yeah, thank you. I just point out that um, you know, we tried to, we tried to make it um. Within sort of the same family as the pros plan, so it feels like it's, I mean, it is strongly related to the pros plan, so we wanted to make it feel like that. And then you you're uh, you know, the the wayfinding system that you have now is really great. It's beautiful and um it's just a matter of. Having another member of that family that's a smaller scale. You know, wayfinding system for that's that's a pedestrian or bicycle scale, right? But thanks for those comments.
Randy? Yeah, we just can't. What do you have for um?
Okay.
Oh, there she is.
Do you have um co- can you? Within Zoom, can she type comments in? In the meantime, David, I have a question. I really like your uh transportation plan projects, primary routes. And then uh kind of the the rating and the score there. So we have um a lot of projects. But it's Scott gave us a total at the bottom.
I knew you were getting over there.
So do we have a total? Is there a reason there is not a total?
I I will address that and you can follow up David if you like. Um, you're right, we don't have a total. We certainly can provide it. Um, honestly, uh, what we have is is um is different a little bit from the projects. In the transportation element, I think. Um, we really don't anticipate these to be in a twenty-year timeframe. We're realist when it comes to understanding the priorities of a non-motorized system improvements. And um, we understand that not all of these typically aren't incorporated in, you know, a twenty-year timeframe. So again, uh, it's certainly possible to provide a total. Um, there's no, there's no real reason we haven't, but we we can do that.
That explanation is just fine.
Okay.
If you, you know, it's outside the scope of the timeline or I don't need a total. I was just, Ben is um. Obviously been a community development director and through the parks department, he's also presented us budgets and what might be necessary to go to bond for uh parks projects. Um, but that's not what this is. This is just uh suggested trails improvements and what the current cost is. And it's not a total package and not everything's going to be done. Just kind of a kind of a general summary of what. You know, you'd like, the public would like to see and you guys have mapped out what that might cost, right?
Okay, yeah, I definitely think those um. Those highest priority projects are the ones that we want to pay close attention to and kind of drill down, make sure that those numbers are accurate. And uh because those are the ones that are obviously most likely to be constructed in that. I don't know, David, if you had anything to offer, anything else to offer on that?
No.
Thank you. Emma, you have intel for us?
Um, David, it looks like there's a couple of slides that say additional info past the question slide. Do you want to run through those?
Sure, sure. Uh, yeah, I know. Yeah, yeah. I mean, if there's, if they help answer questions. Yeah, I'm I'm I'll stay all night. I love this stuff. So that's why we do what we do, because we love, yeah, we love talking about this. So, yeah, I mean, I'm trying to remember exactly what's back here because I haven't. Yeah, so this is, uh, I mean, I saw, I mean, I'll just, I mean, stop me if I'm, I don't know how much time you have, but. So I'll just briefly touch on these. So this is a, this is a page, just an example of the prioritized project list. And um I think the most important thing to point out is you see where the colored scores are. Basically, what we do is we use the goals that we stated upfront as the evaluation criteria. So it's like how how, to what degree does each of these projects um meet each of these goals? That's pretty straightforward, right? Um, the the s- the score, the scoring is, you know, is not like highly rigorous or or um. You know, like we we did not use GIS with a bunch of numbers to do this. It was more, it was a little bit more seat of the pants and intuitive, so it's not. Um, you know, it's not set in stone. Um, and we do that because we know that down the road, you know, a lot of this is sort of a political process and things change. So this is a starting point for the city and the staff, you know, s- you know, city council and staff to use to help. You know, understand what should, you know, what we, what should the city do next, right? you know, understand what should, you know, what we, what should the city do next, right? What's important? And it, like I said, it does dovetail with the transportation plan. Um, those projects, you know, there is a little bit more impetus, I mean, you know, legal pressure to to address those things that that are those projects that are identified in the transportation plan. Because, you know, that's Growth Management Act requirement to meet, you know, to meet the growth targets.
David, can I, I'll for that, um, what you see on the screen was a an early version of that uh prioritized project list. If you compare it to um the projects that are listed, they start on page one oh three of the of the report, you'll see that um, we don't actually include the ranked number in the final report. The the city will have that available, you can always refer to it. But um, we break it down instead of by ranked number into high, medium and low. What that does, it allows a lot of flexibility. It doesn't um kind of feed the the public's interest in questioning you why you're building project four and before you're building project three. So uh, it gives you, it gives you that flexibility to that he was describing. You will have the
Yeah, that's a good point.
On a different sheet in that Excel spreadsheet. This is what's going to be.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. That's, this is, this is actually an old, yeah, an old version. So what's next? I mean, um.
There's a, there's a couple of community engagement slides that um, I don't know if you want to address those. And then maybe there's interest in seeing uh four slides that are the trail types after that. I don't know if you had anything to offer on the community engagement stuff.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, you know, it's, it's fun because everybody loves trails and um, I think, you know, um, this was brought up in the um, in the previous presentation about the the transportation plan. You know, a really, and it and it relates to prioritization of projects, right? Snohomish County is, you know, busy working away on the Snohomish River Trail. Um, they're doing the segment between Everett and Snohomish now, but um eventually they will do the segment from Snohomish to Monroe. And we know that the um um Centennial Trail is extremely popular. And a lot of community members from Monroe talked about the Centennial Trail, right? And it's not even, you know, it's not even connected. And then the other, on the other side is the um uh Snohomie Valley Trail, Snohomie River Trail, Snohomie Valley Trail um connecting to Dubal, right? So these are huge, huge, huge opportunities for the city of Monroe to to connect to the regional trail network. Um, and this came up again and again in the community engagement, because we showed it on, you know, we showed these, we showed the, you know, their planned routes coming in, you know, on the north along Highway Two, along the rail um right away. Up near Highway Two, it's to the northwest corner. And then we showed that the sort of dash lane coming up from the south from Dubal. And people were really excited and and you can imagine, you know, the um, you know, the kind of the recreation dollars, but also just the um, you know, the the way this will affect the city is is huge. So um, I just kind of wanted to point that out. And then a lot of people, you know, a lot of people will talk about, oh, it would sure be nice to be able to connect to schools, like and to connect to go, you know, to go to downtown and go to restaurants instead of driving, like use our bikes or walk. So there's, there's just a lot of support. That, you know, a lot of great things that we heard in the meetings that um, you know, that we try to, I mean, that's what we're doing. We try to make, try to figure out what's going to work and what were the best connections are and 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 listen to the community on those things. Um, so, I mean, if there are comments, um, we presented to the Economic Development Board. Um, yeah, again, so this is kind of related to that, you know, connecting to the regional trail network, but also just, you know, the, I mean, the relative and getting back to the costs, like the the cost benefit of of building non-motor, non-motorized facilities is is just um is great, you know, that the um, there have been studies that show that the construction doesn't adversely affect businesses that, or I mean, the short term, um, there there may be some impacts, but the um, but providing um facilities for biking and walking benefits businesses, especially restaurants. Um, so it's a great investment. Um, you know, real estate values tend to be higher. You know, it's pretty intuitive that walking and bicycling are affordable for um for lower income communities um and and um compared to owning a car. So those are all just great. I mean, it's, it's pretty intuitive. I I hope.
Everyone just stood through these next four slides.
Yeah. I can't, I didn't, yeah, I can't see how many, I kind of remember how many slides are back here, but I don't want to take all night.
I'm happy to to sprint through these four.
Yeah.
Questions?
I just have one quick question.
Yes.
Um, on one of the projects, it's project eight, but it's um low on the priority. It's on one of the lowest priorities. The um, it's our five two two underpass. What's a box culvert? Because it says like that's not included in the cost here. So I'm just curious what that is. It's in my general neighborhood, so it just.
David, did you want to address that?
Yeah. Well, a box culvert is, you know, is a, is a, is basically a concrete box. I mean, it's, it's not a box itself, but it's concrete walls under the tunnel, basically. Um, that's set on, you know, under the roadway and I mean, Connie, you would have to talk about the color, you know, how that would actually be constructed. I mean, it's a, it's a, this is a, this is something that came out of a community meeting. Um, I think the first open house. Um, because because, you know, what you have in Monroe is like five twenty two creates a major barrier. There are only two places to cross under, you know, under, you can cross up by the high school at the roundabouts or you can cross down at one seventy first or street, is that right? I'm not getting that right, but um, anyway, so this idea of like creating another crossing um was attractive to people, but it's also, as you can imagine, it's like super expensive and um requires Wash Dot to get involved and that's, this is a really heavy lift. Um, and probably not the best use of limited dollars, right? I mean, you can get a lot more done for, you know, the same amount. For just that one block.
It was addressing a a a perceived need for getting across.
I can picture what it is in my brain. I just when it said box culvert, I wasn't quite connecting with that. So basically, yeah, it would be a tunnel that would go under five twenty two.
Tunnel, yeah. I mean, and an overpass, you know, like the, like what's proposed, what the transportation plan is proposing over Highway Two is is the other option um for that. That's actually, you know, I think we said this in the comments, it's like that might be a more viable. And we both are difficult. I mean, they both have issues with security, personal security and cost and everything. But um, an overpass also possibility there. If if that project was going to go forward.
Yeah, just real good, yeah, on this one, similar to what David said, the cost is so much and we have so many projects. We almost pulled it off and included, but we thought, why not keep it on in case Wash Dot comes through and has to do a major project and and opportunity pops up, that at least we have it in here. So this one isn't, you know, in in our planning horizon or our financial, probably isn't realistic, but it doesn't hurt to keep it on there just in case we have this opportunity where Wash Dot comes through. So so I'm glad you brought that up.
So so Ben, we can get to like one seventy ninth and then down to Main on one fifty fourth or Main Street, but there's no, in between one fifty fourth and Main Street, there's no crossing under five twenty two. And this, this solves that problem.
Yeah, correct. And and the residents, uh, during the open house, they brought up a great point. It was like we almost have a wall separating us and we only have these two points. So like to have additional connectivity and 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 personal development point, um, it's just cost, right? If if, yeah, we could go back and do it over again.
Yeah, where where I live, I'm like a quarter of a mile as the crope buys from like Main Street. But in order to get there, I have to, you know, turn six directions, go through some roundabouts and everything. I may do it, but it it, so that's why I was just wondering.
Yeah, no, great question.
And there, and there is actually, there's, you know, there's actually federal, there's a federal program called reconnecting communities. It's not quite, I mean, this is not quite the scenario that it's geared for, but it's, it's communities that have been divided by highways and it tends to be, you know, much bigger, lower income communities divided by freeways. So those are big, you know, big sort of equity issues that have complicated histories. But um, anyway, there's, you know, there's, there's, there's kind of money for that. Um, to do that and Wash Dot is, you know, is aligned with that. I mean, they would, they're, they're the kind of agency that would distribute that money. Um, so trail type, yeah, so go ahead, Connie, I'm sorry.
Trying to make sure everybody gets out of here.
Yeah.
Um, this just shows a cross section and some examples of the shared roadway that David was describing. These are the um shared facilities that are on usually low volume, low speed residential roadways where people feel much more comfortable. It's um handled with striping and signage. Um, and sometimes there are some small roundabouts or things that will will traffic calm.
And can I just, sorry?
Yes.
Oh, I was just going to add, you know, I mean, some of the comments we got in the open house were like, people, you know, people fly down my street to cut through traffic. Uh, you know, is creating a real problem. So you, this, this can address not only, you know, providing a route for people biking and walking. It can really address cut through traffic and safety issues um at at the same time. So these are great opportunities to address many issues, you know, many problems in neighborhoods.
The most cost effective uh facility type.
Yeah.
So a question, if there's um already traffic calming in place, um like on our one fifty fourth, they got bump outs. But you're going to have to remove those um to put a bike lane there, correct?
Well, if that
Will be?
Yes. Go ahead.
So you'll just put a, put a, a speed bump of some sort as the traffic calming.
Yeah, yeah, so shared roadways or bicycle boulevards, uh, as they're called in some communities. Um, there are a number of potential treatments that we, that we talk about in the plan. Um, simple ones are just doing like paint, like like roadway markings um and signage. But then you can also do traffic calming, like um speed humps, and you can do um traffic circles at intersections. And you, um, the more, you know, the more extreme versions are to have traffic diverters. So you're actually diverting traffic off that street to us, to us, to another street to really prevent free traffic. At the same time, you're letting people biking go through, you have a cut through that allows bikes to continue on on the same, you know, on the same street. So there's a range of treatments. Of course, it gets more expensive the more you do. Um, so it's not, so there's no bike lanes, you know, that you're, you're just using the existing roadway, which is the nice thing, right? And then figuring out, well, how much do we have to do to make this work and make it safe for people and and, you know, and slow traffic down? It's not stopping traffic, it's just slowing it down and making, you know, so that any, you know, any crash is less, has less consequence.
First, we found, right, you're talking about one fifty fourth, there's existing bump outs to shorten the pedestrian crossing. And the proposed facility type is for protected bike lanes. So your question is, will those necessitate, you know, we have to take those away to basically extend those protective bike lanes. Yes, is the short answer. Um, however, that in itself requires probably more you know, more valuation to see if there's an alternate facility type, if there's an alternate way to deal with those crossings and maintain those bump outs. I don't, offhand, I don't know how many there are. Is every intersection or every third intersection, I don't.
There's probably half dozen of them. I just have seen people bike on that road and it's kind of dodgy because they have to kind of swing out into traffic to make the bump out. Just thought it fills, if that's your plan to cut those out so that bikes have kind of a free access to the entire road.
That is what would have to happen, yes. Uh, side path is basically it's a big air use path that runs along the same alignment as the roadway. It was a five foot separation that accommodates bikes and heads. Um, you can see these facilities are typically are very often built with federal money. Um, and you can build them at the same grade as the road. So they uh are considered to be ADA compliant, even if the roadway is steeper than a five percent. Um, it's a pretty good solution in a lot of situations. Next slide. Uh, shared use path, this is your regional trail. You know, this is the ten, twelve foot wide path that uh typically is less than five percent, launched to the grade. Um, it's, it's sometimes it's within the right of way, most of the time it's not, it's in a utility border. Or um, if if you were inclined to build a wide path, it might be uh through the DOT right of way. Next. And just unpaid trails of any surface that don't necessarily need to accommodate um both users. But depending on where they're at, what kind of volume they get, they they can. And I think those, those last two slides were just a couple more project sheets. I don't know if we want to take the time to look at those. And if you have specific questions, I want to make sure we give them answered. Um, but you'll see the the information on these project sheets is pretty uh extensive. That's the goal is to give you kind of a roadmap to get these projects built. And um, and you do identify in the notes if there's extenuating circumstances or things that need to be accounted for. I think that we will add in the reports to project something. So I think that's it.
Right, thank you both for being here, Connie and David.
Cindy, thank you.
You too, Ben.
Thank you.
Okay. Move on to item six point three, um, and it's community development report. This one's for June.
Try and run through this pretty quick. The June Community Development Department report. Um, starting at the top, we have three pre-application meetings for the month of June. Uh, we had a pre-app for a small outdoor go kart track at Adventure Motorsports. This is the empty lot that they have next to their existing facility. Um, their previous site plan review um that was approved um had expired. So they're kind of pitching some new ideas for uses for that lot. Um, then we had a pre-application meeting for um a proposal to build fifty five attached town home units on a currently existing RV and boat storage. Um, if you know where Matthew House is, um, this is a lot that's just behind Matthew House on one seventy seventh. If you're going up to Washington State before Matory, it's on that road. Then we had a pre-application meeting with Snohomish Regional Fire and Rescue for a proposal to create a new fire station. Um, this is the empty lot that's just behind Coastal on Oak Street. Our project highlight for the month is all of the wonderful outreach work that the community development staff have been doing in the month of June. Building staff worked the farmer's market and um planning staff had a booth at the block party in downtown Monroe and a booth at Juneteenth and Pride at the Sky Columbus River Park. And planning also visited the high school as well with the board game, right? Planning also held our comprehensive plan update open house with community members, including residents within the urban growth area. We made sure to do extra outreach to residents, uh, community members within the urban growth area to give them to count to that. Outreach efforts went well and we had some great discussions. Um, as far as updates go, um, really no updates here except for under final plat review, Eaglemont nine, formerly Cooper Ridge, uh, has been approved and it was just reported with Snohomish County. We had twelve single family building permits issued in June and the building department conducted a hundred, hundred and thirty seven inspections. Here's our charts for received and issued permits. Updates from the building department. Um, the big update there is regarding our new permitting system. We have selected a new vendor to work with and we're in the process of getting a bid together to present to council. We have selected uh a new vendor to work with and we're in the process of getting a bid together to present to council for approval within the next couple of months. Um no updates from co-enforcement. Business license numbers were about the same as they were in the previous month. These are our new business license applications for work and motor businesses in June.
I see chocolate and coffee.
And there's been some updates to the comprehensive plan section. So Kate, I don't know if you want to provide any updates there?
Yeah, it's just um more of the outreach and starting to bring you the results that we're, we're hearing the same thing, which is really reassuring that we heard last year to what we're hearing this year and what the community would like to see. And the same concepts of how we're gonna accommodate additional growth, housing uh and jobs, so. Wrap up the online survey. So put it out there. It is open and live. There was a glitch over the weekend, but it is live again through the end of the month, July thirty-first. Uh it's kind of an interesting tool. It's interactive. You can see how uh it's a sliding scale, so you can see where people are falling on their thoughts for the goals and policies. And at the very end, there's a land use map where you can tag comments. Oh, and I, we did complete the materials for the grants through Palmer, so we did get, we, we reimbursed the total of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that let you help pay a little bit with this project.
Under annexations, um it looks like there is an update to the Monroe thirty annexation. Um Nina, did you want to provide any?
Um just that it's moving forward. Um the development agreement and organization agreement was submitted, so we will be um sending out a notice and receiving review and things like that. Um and then taking it to council for a public hearing next month and then hopefully submitting to the county soon.
Have any questions for the June report?
Thanks a bunch, Hannah.
Yeah.
Into our discussion back commissioners and staff, start with the uh online folks list.
Thank you, staff and our guests for the great presentations. I agree that Parks Plan uh looks beautiful, so that is awesome. Uh but otherwise, that's all I got. Have a great night.
I echo Liz's uh statements. A lot of, lot of heavy lifting by staff and consultants uh for this meeting. Um I'm very impressed by the quality of, of the work. It's very easy to follow. Although it's, it's pretty dense, uh it, it's still easy to follow. Uh I want to remind the commissioners and staff that we, we have our pickleball, a pickleball ribbon cutting tomorrow at four o'clock up at the Sky River Park. And I, I suggest that we have a commissioner's pickleball game one night. I think that would be fun. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Brandy.
Nothing, nothing.
Hey, we can hear you now.
We can hear you now.
Okay, thanks, Brandy. Kelsey.
Um I went to a festival last weekend, Incarnation, and it was wonderful and I saw a lot of people from like our valley area. It was really special. So I'm excited for all of the like events that are coming up around here. We'd get out to them. It was pretty cool to see the community coming together and just like getting to, I don't know if you can.
Is that Remnant or Parks?
It was um uh it was called Brody Nation. It was a much smaller one. It's only done that one, but there's a couple of.
Um Alon Nation, which I thought was uh great, uh good information, a lot to go through, but um thank you. I know it's added a lot of hard work putting all this together. Um so, thank you.
Hannah. Could I get a motion to extend just in case?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was gonna start my comments with that and say, I moved to extend the meeting past nine P M. Hopefully, I'll be a little bit.
Okay.
Thanks, Connie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Thanks, Hannah, for watching the time. Um I just wanted to say thanks, yeah, to staff for everyone who joined us and taking all of our questions and um thanks to commissioners for reading through the packet of materials. It was a lot of reading and um we don't get good questions unless everybody does a reading, so thank you to commissioners as well.
Um yes, I echo. Thank you so much to staff and our, our consultants and everybody who has put so much work into this so far. I know there's a ton more work to come, but um it's so appreciated. And thank you, Anita and other staff for um, you know, taking our comments and suggestions and um getting them added like so quickly. So it's, it's very appreciated and definitely feels like we're being heard and, and all that. So thank you for all of that. Um music in the park has been wonderful, like it is every year. Um every Friday has been uh fantastic weather out there, which has been um a lot of fun. And then there's one more, one more concert in the uh music in the park uh this Friday and then we're into August, which is crazy. Um but it's just been great to see, you know, with the summer, so many people out and about in this community and it's just, it's wonderful to see out here that the kids playing and people out there, dogs and, and all that. So um, but yeah.
Thank you. Um just a few things. Um this Thursday, staff and uh the mid-team will be going to the senior center to do the Monroe twenty forty-four exercise. That was a suggestion that came out of one of our outreach events, so we'll be getting their input. And then also a reminder for Jay and uh Brandy specifically, the last CAC meeting is also on Thursday, seven P M at Saint Vincent de Paul. This room is not available. Uh and then we received, so part of the comp plan process is the environmental impact statement. We received a total of eleven separate letters with a total of thirty comments. Um there was a team meeting today. We have responded to all those comments, which is part of the final environmental impact statement, which you'll be seeing later in August or the first part, uh part of September. The other pieces of that, the trail master plan and the transportation work will also be um blended into some of the responses. And that's all I have for you, CD.
Scott. Do you have anything for it?
No, I'm.
We made you talk for a whole hour, so that's about it.
I don't think I have any credits.
Ben.
Uh like was mentioned, the pickleball ribbon cutting tomorrow, same group that finished up the pickleball court is starting resurfacing on the basketball courts and the tennis slash pickleball courts at Lake Tye. And so that started this week, should be finished uh hopefully by the end of the week. And so you have brand new surfacing out there with more pickleball courts out there. And then Blueberry Park, that's been going on for quite some time. We are probably looking at hopefully opening um about mid-August. And so we're waiting on two more parks and then the surfacing and it will be open.
Keeping that grass water so it looks beautiful when the kids start playing their mid-August years. Perfect. Okay, brand new irrigation system.
I would like to add to be the opposite of Ben. We are now hitting Blueberry Tree heavily with our overlay program. It's a complete reconstruct of the roadway. It's a lot of mayhem. Use ultimate rounds. But once that's done, the road will look great and the park will look great and life will just be great.
And the twofer, we got all the cars that wouldn't start. You got those towed to get your pavement project done.
Yeah, I might have had to tow a few today, but uh.
Thank you. Anita.
Um just that, um we'll have a booth that National Night Out next month. And then um Commissioner Petrino, Ben and I challenge you to put a.
Jay will be on my team. Jay will be my partner.
Okay, Hannah.
I don't have anything besides learn from me. If you go to the Renaissance Fair, wear sunblock. I'm so sunburned. But it's so much fun. If you want to see the jousting, get there early to get a good seat. It's at five o'clock. But.
Yeah, I had one of the best costumes I've ever seen.
Were you a medieval wench?
I was a goblin, thank you. But uh, yeah, it's a lot of fun. Um and our, there's just so many great local artisans that are there selling stuff. So if you don't have tickets, tickets are still available. There's four more weekends, so.
Thanks, Hannah. Great report. Yeah. And if you're jousting, be careful. I, I did on Sunday, see an EMT headed up there, so just be careful. Right. Thanks, everyone.
Don't get perforated.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor, please say aye. Closed. Thanks, everyone.
Look at that, we're only a minute over.